All right, we're back to live action. The public hearing before the Sari County Board of Appeals is hereby called to order on June 20th, 2023 at 5:00 PM in the Sari County Courthouse in Hayward, Wisconsin. President on behalf of the board, Al Gerber, Laura Russ, Steve Kelsey, Dee Dobless, and Jim Tiffany, from the zoning office, Jay Poslowski, and Kathy Marks. Those persons deserving to give pertinent testimony will be afforded to do so. As recognized by the chairman, that person will clearly state their full name before giving testimony. Each hearing will follow this order. Reading of the application, submission of the file to the board, applicant's statements and presentation evidence, testimony of those in support of the application, statements from person and objection to the application, rebuttal as permitted by the board and decision by the board. Orderly procedure requires that each side shall proceed without interruption by the other. All testimony will be addressed to the board, and there will be no questions or arguments between individuals. Any person who's aggrieved by a decision of the board may appeal the decision to the circuit court within 30 days of the date following the board's decision letter. The day following the signing of the board's decision letter is the first day of the 30-day appeal filing period. This public hearing has been published as a Class 2 notice in accordance with Chapter 985 Wisconsin statutes in the Sawyer County Record and the Sawyer County Gazette. Public hearing will follow this order, variance applications, new business, and adjournment. First matter is approval of the minutes from the February 21st, 2023 meeting. Is there any discussion, changes, or questions regarding the February 21 meeting minutes? Is there a motion to approve those minutes as presented? And seconded, all those in favor of the motion signify saying aye, all approved, same sign. All right.
All right, our first variance application this evening, this is a public hearing in the town of Edgewater, variance number 23-001, owner Crystal Spring Condominium Association, Inc., Section 5, Township 37 North, Range 9 West, parcel 008210000100 through 0500. It is 1.51 total acres, zoned residential recreational one. Application is for the construction of a detached accessory structure garage for a five-unit condo. The size of the proposed garage requested is to be 18 and a half by 60 feet. That would be 20 and a half by 62 feet with eaves. This would replace an existing garage that was 18 and a half by 36 and a half feet. The garage would be located 18 and a half feet at the closest point to the center of County Highway F. Variance has requested a Section 4.21 parent two of the Sawyer County zoning ordinance would require the prior granting of a variance for any structures closer than 75 feet to the center line of County Highway B. The proposed request is seeking a 38... So it's 18 and a half feet to the right-of-way, 38 and a half feet to the center line. As part of my staff report, again, this request is for an 18 and a half by 60-foot shared condo garage. That would be 20 and a half by 62 with eaves. There was an existing 18 and a half by 36-foot garage measured at the same road setbacks. This building has fallen somewhat into the shape of disrepair. The older garage would be replaced within the existing footprint, but expanding that additional 23 and a half by 18 and a half feet further to the south. As part of my onsite inspection that was conducted on March 27th of this year, the proposed layout, the proposed location was laid out on the property. The existing garage would need to be fully replaced. As part of the request of the condo association, they would like to make the garage bigger so that each of the five unit owners would have their own 12 by 18 and a half foot space available for the, again, total of the 60 by 18 and a half. This expansion would require the prior granting of variance, but the setback distance to the road does not change from where the existing building is located. The proposed impervious surfaces for the slots with the variance approval would be approximately 10.4%. There is no other area that exists on the property to fit a similar-sized structure without major grading, slope alteration, septic system relocation, and driveway relocation. The condo association has identified a potential low-line area that could be utilized for a rain garden to help control garage runoff. The proposed garage would be approximately 85 feet to the ordinary high-water mark and would meet all other setbacks. As by action of the town board, motion was unanimously approved. Pete Baraboo, chairman, Scott Spates, supervisor, Jamie Scar, supervisor. No additional comments. Sign, Natalie Clementstown, clerk. There were eight additional comment letters that were sent out to adjacent property owners. None were returned. That is all.
Gee, at one point you said County Road B, I assumed you meant County Road F.
County Road F, did I say B? Sorry about that.
County Road F, okay. All right, is there someone here from the condo association or someone to speak on their behalf? We need to step to the microphone, I believe. And state your name, please.
John Vardis, president, Crystal Springs Condo Association.
So what we see is what we get?
Pretty much so. I mean, it's an old resort that is just kind of shoehorned in its space, so there isn't a lot of extra room to maneuver things around. And what we're trying to do is it's four cabins with an existing house like the old resort was, but there is zero outdoor storage aside from that old garage, which was basically just divided in half and was in the well, in the disrepair when we moved into the place. And we're just looking to give everybody some modern, modern type of secure storage that could hold enough of something possibly in ATV, but we're not trying to create complete garages for everybody, for cars or anything. It's more just for sports toys and water toys and things like that. And just modern, modern types of storage for kind of the modern lake owner. And we're all, our whole group is on board to do it. We're just hoping we can continue up in the footprint we've asked for. Just because any other type of layout that we've looked at just really starts to encroach on either where the limited common property starts or grading, as Jay had mentioned. Just this morning, too, I watched the Republic Services truck come in to shift things around too much. That truck kind of needs a straight shot to get in wherever it comes in and goes out again, which again, kind of limits where we even think we could possibly even put this elsewhere. But our intention with the building is going to be a low-slung roof, kind of a loafing shed-style roof to divert more water to the back towards the ditched into, hopefully into this rain garden area, which would also take some of, a lot of the water off of the driveway that now is, I know is getting into the lake as well directly. So it's kind of a bigger project in that sense of that we can kind of correct a couple of problems here, too, that I think is overall better for the quality of the lake and for our, for our unit owners. And just asking for you to look at this and hopefully give us a yes on our request.
Is there any, well, two questions actually. What would the maximum height be? Similar to what's there now?
Similar, yeah. I believe the original peak on that gable roof, I think, is 14 feet, dealing with the lumberyard that gave us the bid. I think it was roughly going to be 14 to 16 maybe, depending on how, that's what I calculated.
Second-story storage?
No, no, it would just be whatever the peak runs. So it would be very similar. I just didn't know if it was, if it's going to change with their adding the gables or the eaves onto the roof, the final exact pitch. But no, it's all just single, similar to a, I mean, I think of it more as like a kind of a storage facility type of garage type of thing. It's, you know, it's going to be shallower roof and five stalls and you drive in and put your stuff in. So yeah, there would be no storage above it, except whatever you could stick in the rafters, but no second-story attic storage or anything like that. So it maintains a similar, similar roofline within, within a foot or so.
Any changes or alternations, alterations, or additions to that fish house?
Nothing, no, nothing, nothing planned to change with that. It just, it functions as a fish.
Could use a little paint.
Yeah, yeah, it needs some work. It definitely needs some work, but it does exactly what it needs to do. We just used it this hard this weekend again, so it's, yeah, it needs work, but it still cleans fish.
Right, I don't have any other questions, and you folks do. Did everybody get a chance to get out there and take a look at it?
You gotta use your mics, sorry. No, there you go. The setbacks from the right-of-way would be the same.
Correct, yeah.
And so we would be extending it south, is that the direction?
Correct.
With the height of the road and the bank there, I don't feel the close proximity really impacts the right-of-way. It's, it's pretty well down slope from the public road. You can't use that right-of-way unless you want to roll right into any building down there. So I don't see where it's really enhancing any problem.
Should semi-hold those comments for discussion? As I were still in public hearing.
Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak on behalf of the application? Anyone to speak in opposition to the application? Step right up and identify yourself.
Linda Zomer, 902 Holly Hill Lane, Birchwood, Edgewater Property Owner. First of all, I want to talk about the board of appeals process and the opportunity to weigh in at a town level. I know the zoning office is overrun with calls quite often, and a lot of those calls, I think, could be alleviated if information was posted on the county website sooner. So for instance, the town of Edgewater met on June 13th. This application information was not posted on the county website until the 13th. So people have no idea unless they're pretty savvy to be looking. And so how do you even weigh in at the town level? Now, since the current board has been seated, plus ever since Pete Baraboo has been chairman, I think they have approved just everything and anything because they believe people should do what they want with their property. So there was no comparison to comprehensive plan, or they don't know the criteria that you need to judge a variance under. So I'm speaking in opposition of this because, number one, I don't believe the applicant has met the burden to prove the three criteria that to be allowed to build in the same footprint gives them reasonable use of that property, and they might have a little bit reduced square foot of storage. But as some of you know, when I've been before you, you have traditionally decided to not expand non-conformities. So this is a combination of non-conformities. You have five dwellings on one lot, and the information zoning presented to you was not complete. In 2003, Mr. Christman did a site inspection. So while this structure, proposed structure, whether built in the footprint or I don't believe it warrants some expansion under a variance, but you have Cabin 4, 24 feet from the lake. Cabin 3, it looks like part of it's 30 feet from the lake. Cabin 2, 30 feet from the lake. And then there's another structure, I can't tell what it is, but this is truly expanding a non-conformity. And on a lakeshore, that has an impact to the water quality. And even if there's a rain garden, putting on another larger structure further limits any potential movement or replacement of septic systems. So I don't see how under the legal criteria you're, you need to base your decision on that this application fits. It would be expanding a non-conformity. And with it being a non-conforming structure to the road, you definitely wouldn't want to make it any more non-conforming. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in opposition to the application? Thank you. I have an additional question for the applicant or the applicant's agent. In the literature that we were provided with and in your statement here earlier, you mentioned that there was a consideration of a rain garden. Do you have any dimensions or location?
That was something I had spoke with Jay about when he came down for the site visit, and he said he would, he could assist in helping design that. But it would, it would be directly to the south of the garage. It's already kind of a sloped, lower area. That's kind of one of the lower areas that would be prime for that to hold that water. And it's also the same direction that the driveway, a lot of the driveway water is going anyways, where now it continues, it practically flows through through one neighbor's yard kind of to the lake is it's kind of its direct run. So we're trying to alleviate that a little and then also just keep the water out of the lake just because it's a better thing than having that runoff. But it would be, yeah, just south of the expansion, still within that. With the expansion there, the space is still plenty of space for that. The actual design, though, like I said, I was going to speak with Jay about that and say you could steer us in a direction for the design of it. Because we'd like to incorporate the water off the roof, but also reshape a little bit of the driveway, maybe divert some of that driveway water that direction as well to keep it from going into the lake directly.
If your application would be approved, would requiring that type of catch basin be a hardship, or is that something you're going to do anyhow?
I think we'd be prepared to do that anyhow. That's something that's, it's been a, one of the unit owners, the one that it affects the most. We brought it up at the, at our meetings, and you know, this is a time to kind of correct that. It would be the time to do it, so we'd be, we'd be in favor of doing that.
And then just one more question. You know, the proximity to the center line is very close, hardly ever see. All of those are grandfathered in. They were there before zoning came. I don't know why, maybe no one else is here knows why either. This 75-foot number came up, but in, in the wintertime, is snow getting pushed right onto your property or the condo association's property from the highway?
I guess I can't answer for sure. I don't, I don't get up there a lot in the winter. I guess I've never noted it too much. I mean, it is, it is close to the garage, but I don't think it's everywhere. It's been piled up completely against it. It seems like that, that ditch where the garage is seems to drop down enough and then contain what I've noticed ever being there. All right, well, thank you.
One more question. I didn't notice it on, on the map. Where are the septic tanks and system here?
Each unit has its own. I have a holding tank, and I believe all the other units, the cabin units have holding tanks. Okay. The best my knowledge, and the home, the home itself has a drain field which cuts across my property, which is on the north side of, opposite of the garage, basically. So that's the only drain field I'm aware of. Do you have one, Jerry? So Jerry has a small drain field, but that's, those are on the cabin side between. Otherwise, I believe the other units are holding tanks as far as I know.
So the three units south of the house in closest proximity to this garage, those are all three holding tanks?
All but, all but one, I think, has a small drain field. I think they're older style, whatever, style drain fields.
Right, well.
When we did the, the lake survey, everything came back okay. A few years back when they did the big Chautauq Lake survey. But I don't know the specifics of each holding tank or septic tank myself. I just know what mine is for sure, and that the home has, because it cuts across my yard. But I believe they're just holding tanks except for the one, the middle cabin.
Okay, any other questions, applicant's agent? Thank you. Sir, did you have to do a statement?
I am speaking in favor. My name is Jerry Voliger. I live at 2252 County Road F, which is building number three. And I can attest to that building number three and building number four, we both have septic holding systems that are on the south side of our property, well away from that dotted line on page, well, it says page one of the Crystal Spring Condominiums. As far as your question with snow removal, we were up there almost the entire winter. And because of the, I would say, 12 to 15-foot drop that's from the center line and the roadway down into our property, which is then a ditched-out area, which the county has been mowing quite nicely, that the snow never leaves five to seven feet from the side of the road itself. It's just banked up there, so it does never get down to that garage itself.
Okay, so, thank you.
We had no issues with snow removal, and we actually removed the snow throughout that entire area, so. I would say that, from my perspective as a homeowner and my wife Lynn, that this is a very dilapidated building, and it doesn't look good. And I think, as Fred says down the street, making something perpetually new would be a great improvement to this property. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, one more chance. Anybody else to speak on behalf of the application or in opposition to the application? Hearing none, discussion by the board and decision by the board. Steve, would you like to remind, running through those comments you had made prior to?
Sure. My, one observation that hit me when I was down there was the extending that building to the south. It's the same plane, so to speak, from the roadway and setback from the roadway. It's, it's not impacting the right-of-way in an adverse way in my mind. You cannot use that right-of-way, given that a slope change. The visual line from the road is it's obnoxious right now because it's an old building, but I don't see where a new building would be worse. And so I don't think it would be causing harm to anybody in that location.
Yeah, I, any expansion or alter, alteration to that County Road F isn't going to go that east, that east to the lake?
Yeah.
It would have to go to the west because, because of the bank. That's probably the reason right-of-ways are as wide as they are. So if they, they need to be shifted or widened, they, there's room to do it. And there's no room to do it to the, to the east.
I think the addition of a rain garden, base, catch basin would be a better situation for the lake. Because if right now there is some runoff getting away and heading to that lake, that could be alleviated. I think that's a win.
I'm wondering if there was any consideration at all of, and I guess what was the determining factor on 60 feet versus maybe 48 feet or whatever? Was it the size of the storage units themselves, or eight, eight feet versus 10 feet in width? You indicated they weren't going to be used for cars. It was just going to be for water toys and that type of thing.
I guess, yeah, we, we determined 10 feet, and that's also allowing for the divider walls and, and room for the hardware for the garage doors and things like that. So I believe that gave us that extra little window for that space. So it was, it was the five stalls, roughly 10 feet of space. So you could get something in there, but still kind of, you know, put something a little wider and you could still get around to the back of your, back end of the, the building to, to get to it, get to your things. But it was, it was allowing for a wide enough door to get something in and then, but also having that space for the whatever type of walls you need, wall system to divide everything.
Right, just for clarification, this, this is one long unit, not five separate units. They're conjoined, there's five conjoined, exact size, storage spaces.
Correct, yeah, one building, five units, all, all the same, cookie cutter, so, yeah, one building.
Right, thank you. Jim, turn your microphone on. Oh, it is on. All right, what do you think?
You know, I guess you know, there might be some thought if they replace it, replace it at the same size it is, but that's going to be pretty substandard for what they're trying to do. I mean, you couldn't hardly park a bicycle on that, so I don't know if that use would do much good. It's not going to be any closer because of that ditch, you know, I don't see any huge harm to it. And like Steve said, if the water is running off, off that blacktop, which it probably is, they do have a rain garden to divert when it's there. It'd probably be a better situation when they got now.
Steve, any suggestions or comments?
My comment would be that, if anything, adding, making sure that the rain garden is, is put there in the right place and with the right materials. But a new building would look a lot better than what's there. Because I've seen too many of these buildings where the garages are, the roofs are full of moss and they're bold and they're just going to fall down. And to me, that's harmful to anybody that wants to open a door and go in there.
Okay, thank you. If the old one comes down, there may be some displaced rats and bats and snakes and whatever. All right, any further discussion? Anyone care to make a motion? Before we do that, are we of similar thought that a rain garden should be included in, in, if this is approved? If, if it's denied, then that's a mute point, but, okay. And that garden then would be subject to the design and approval of the zoning office?
Yes. Who, who gets involved in creating the plan for that?
Yeah, so our office does, and it takes in several factors. It takes into the extent of rainwater you're trying to divert into that system, which at this point is going to be, you know, the full 60 by 18 and a half. It takes into consideration soil condition, and then ultimately, it's a volumetric calculation as to the deeper you go, the less square footage. The shallower you go, the more square footage. So those are the determining factors, but it certainly looks like there'd be, you know, room in that location, especially if they were to go to a six, eight, six to eight-inch deep rain garden.
Does that typically call for pooling or ponding and a slow release, or?
Generally, it would just be pooling and ponding. And then there would be, you know, specific vegetation that is planted within that area, hydrophilic vegetation that likes being its feet wet during heavy rain events. And we do have brochures and pamphlets for that.
And they work?
They do, yeah.
I guess I would make a motion to approve mandating that the rain garden catch basin that's approved by zoning be written into the variance and required.
Okay, approved as presented, what, what the dimension figures that we, that we were given?
I would be fine with it, yes.
Okay. Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Second motion by Steve, second by Jim, discussion on the motion. Isn't there generally in our packet this three-step test? Am I not seeing it, or?
Is your finding?
It was in, it was in the staff report, but I don't see it in the oh, I didn't, I didn't print that, that staff report. As part of our discussion, reading from the reasons for approval, a permitted use is, on this property is not a permitted use is not possible on this property without a variance approval. That's certainly true. The circumstances are beyond the control of the applicant and are are unique not to, and are unique not to the applicant. The zoning lot predates zoning regulations, and the construction matches the lot and available area, and all of those statements, I would agree with.
All right, and those are the reasons of fines of
All right, and those are the reasons of fines of facts for a hardship. The hardship aspect of the variance. Then you'd have, you know, the next set of criteria, you know, is it, um? Is there unnecessary limitations or unique physical property limitations that prevent it from being placed in a compliant location? And then is it, you know, contrary to public interest? That's where you have to look at, you know, the public's aspect, you know? Is there a safety concern with it being too close to the road? Is there a safety concern with it being too close to a lake? Uh, now, this one does meet the required setbacks, but. Those are, those are finds of, those are finds of facts that we should include as part of the motion for either approval or deny.
Do you feel we handled the first one?
Yes, yep, and then I guess, you know, as as part of discussion, work through those other elements.
Okay, do you want to do that, Ellen?
Go ahead.
In the uh. Second phase of the hardship. Um. I think it's very true, there's very little or no buildable area. Um. The buildable area is very narrow. There's, it's very limited. That goes along with the lot depth being shallow. The slope and steep behind, you can't go any closer. I think the setbacks do overlap, obviously, there. Um. I think erosion sounds like it potentially can exist or at least runoff. That would be alleviated. I think there's enough reasons to. Fulfill that. Category. As far as the harm to public interest or neighboring land uses. Uh, I think that it won't change visibility and safety from the two driveways. I think that uh. The. This would make a bad situation better is not exactly a great statement, but I think. The benefit to the neighborhood and to the public would be removal of a dilapidated building. With another building of modern. Construction. Um, I think that has something to do with the appeal for the neighbors, so that's maybe enhancing visual. Um. I don't see where the proposed use. Um. Armed anybody in the public. So I guess I don't feel that that there's any harm to public interest. Especially with rain garden stopping potential runoff, I think that enhances.
Okay, any other uh, comments of? Or discussion on the red on the motion before we vote? Hearing now call for vote, all those in favor of the motion as presented, signify by saying aye. Aye, all post same sign. Letter record reflected the motion has passed. Uh, by vote of five zero. Thank you, folks, um. The um, zoning office can walk you through the rest of the permitting process. All right.
Right, this is the the second variance here this evening, a public hearing in the town of Hayward, variance number twenty three dash zero zero two, owner Scott and uh. Daniel Dahl, uh, part of government lot for section thirty six township forty one north range eight west. Parcel zero one zero eight four one three six five four one five. It is point three eight total acres. Zone residential recreational one. Application is for the construction of a twenty foot by sixty foot deck area to provide flat access area for ADA compliance. And for a uh, for a bar restaurant called the dock. Also to provide additional table areas for outdoor seating. The proposed deck area would be located as close as nine feet to the ordinary high watermark of round lake. Variance is requested as section six point one parant one of the Sawyer County Shoreland Wetland Protection Ordinance. Would require the prior granting of a variance for any structure closer than seventy five feet to the ordinary high watermark. The proposed twenty by sixty deck would be located as close as nine feet. As part of my staff report. Uh, the applicant of the dock, uh, Scott and and Daniel or or Butch Dahl are requesting a twenty by sixty deck onto an existing bar restaurant. The existing bar restaurant is located seven feet to the ordinary high watermark. The proposed deck expansion area would be located nine feet at the closest point to the ordinary high watermark. Uh, the existing bar restaurant currently exists within the RR one zone district. Uh, this is an existing nonconforming, AKA grandfathered use in that the bar restaurant existed in this location. Prior to the zone district classifications being acted into ordinance. The applicant is pri- uh, replying, applying for relief of section six point one. Of the Sawyer County Zoning Shoreland Wetland Protection Ordinance for reduced ordinary high watermark setback. Uh, this request comes in the form of a larger deck. Which per the applicant's statement would be used to hold larger outdoor seating area and would be handicap accessibles for other events it may hold. The deck would be fenced and screened from views of county highway B. As part of my staff report that was completed on April twelfth of this year, I measured setbacks for the proposed deck area. Uh, the proposed deck area would be located over existing holding tanks for wastewater of the property. According to DSPS code, holding tanks are to be located five feet from the building, but there is no clear language or distinct distinction. Uh, as to a deck. The five foot tank setback from a building is needed for sewer gas exchange and general installation practices. As long as the tanks are still accessible for pumpers through either a trapdoor or access hatch. The Sawyer County uh, sanitarian does not have issues with those setback requirements. This property also has a large amount of pervious surfaces on the lot. The rough calculations of impervious surfaces would be roughly seventy seven percent. Uh, now, this amount would be calculated as the existing impervious surfaces, again, which would be considered existing nonconforming. The request of the additional deck area would not increase those impervious surfaces. As a deck would need to maintain a minimum of one eighth inch gaps between the deck boards as to allow water to pass through. As per discussions with the applicant, they were interested in doing additional treatment areas for impervious surfaces and blacktop runoff. They would be interested in back pitching the slope under the deck so that the rainwater would run back into the parking lot area. Where it could be diverted into a potential treatment area as opposed to eroding away soil under the deck that would run directly into the lake and would be void of vegetation. Uh, as per. Motion of the town board. Motion was unanimously approved, Stephanie Loxon Chairman, Andrea Whitworth Supervisor, Gary Inhofe Supervisor. Uh, they stated. The reasons, did they end up? The numbers changed. They indicated reasons four, nine, ten, and eleven for approval. Uh, with con- uh, with conditions addressing nineteen twenty and twenty one reasonably. But ultimately, they took my staff report for their motions of approval. Which those numbers change depending on which. I guess which uh, approval reason you're looking at. Yeah, and we we asked for a different uh, additional correspondence from the clerk and and didn't receive them. Uh, so they they end up approving it, but um. Was limited on what they had for their approval reasons. There were.
But did they state their um. Conditions?
Well, this is what I got, and we reached out to him twice to give us additional information, and they didn't. Thank you. Now, the nineteen twenty and twenty one, I don't even know where that corresponds to in my staff report, because I don't have a number nineteen, so. But in either case, um. There were seventeen additional comment letters sent out. Two were returned. Both of those came with no objections. As the previous business owner of the dock, I commend the owners. Entrepreneurial spirit. Uh, and wish them. Much success in continuing this historical establishment restaurant and bar. In an effort to increase their business, I support their application to build the deck at the dock. If the variance is approved, I would recommend that the shoreline mitigation be required. There are two small slough type waterways bordering this property. One of which is close to the bridge and the canal that connects Little to Big Round Lake. Uh, these areas are dense with unique wildlife habitat, and although they are not a slow no wake zone, there is much boat activity in this area. It is known to be very near a permanent loon nesting location, therefore it is imperative that these natural areas are protected from mowing and other clearing. Thank you, Jakita Lynn. Um. This is to whom it may concern. At the town of the Sawyer County Board of Appeals. Just come to my attention that there is a variance requested to submit for the deck expansion of the dock restaurant. Please accept this letter as a recommendation to allow for a permit for this project. Here's why. The deck would be a good use throughout the year during Round Lake youth events. We've done these events for years at Powell's Famous Days Report and DJ's Dock. We can have as many of seventy five plus kids and their parents and grandparents participating. Further, the deck project would create a much safer environment for children with disabilities, providing rail. Uh, railing and handicap accessible ramps for people coming in and off water by boat. Personally, I've come via boat and navigating the land area is awkward. It is critical that we make this a safer environment for kids. Especially for children with disabilities. The YCA, which is the Youth Conservation Alliance. Is one hundred percent youth and family focused. We work regularly with Round Lake. Uh, with the Round Lake community, teaching kids about the environment primarily through fishing programs. We also interface with charities and support children with special needs, specifically Down Syndrome, Autism, and cerebral palsy. On a personal note, Butch is very plugged into the Round Lake community and consider him to be an extremely valuable resource to the Round Lake area for events and meal accommodations. He, uh, please feel free to contact me if there's any questions or need further details regarding our events, Kevin Bushnick. Um. And then I do have correspondence submitted by the DNR as this is a reduced ordinary high watermark setback. Uh, did the board have a chance to read that at all? Now I'll read it in record then. Uh, dear board members, Department of Natural Resources has received the material for the June twenty 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 three public hearing concerning the variance request submitted by Scott and Daniel Dahl. To construct a twenty by sixty foot deck that would lie nine feet from the ordinary high watermark of Brown Lake. Interviewing the application and discussing this request with county zoning staff, the department understands the following. The applicant stated the purpose for the variance request is to meet ADA compliance. And for a restaurant bar outside area and to provide additional table areas for outdoor seating. The applicant will divert divert most of the water runoff towards an engineered development. Engineer developed. Natural filter system, which is eventually some sort of retention basin. However, the department is not sure what most means or. Where this would be placed on the lot, as there is very little area on the lot that is not developed. The applicants will be removing approximately five hundred square feet of impervious hard surface and making it pervious. The department understands that mostly all the five hundred square feet is existing. And would be under the requested deck. I think he may have got that wrong. He may have thought there was a patio there. There is some existing brickwork. But that's just a kind of a sidewalk entryway. Um. The department also understands that Sawyer County Code considers decking with at least one eighth inch slots between deck boards to be pervious. However, in asking and discussing with county staff, um. It would be considered pervious, the ground beneath the decking will need to be sloped properly and prepared. The department understands the ground that would be below the requested has been used as an outside area associated with the restaurant bar for many years. And is largely compacted soil, that is at least in part slopes towards the lake. To be considered pervious, the area must hold or not release a runoff or all the majority of the precipitation that falls. While it does not say to what percent impervious surface currently exists on the property in question. It is clear that there is a much greater than allowed maximum of thirty percent. As per section nine point four, the Sawyer County zoning ordinance. The department notes that all impervious surface regulations under section nine must be met, um, if the request is granted. As the board reviews the variance request, please keep in mind that the applicant has the burden of providing their application meets each of the three statutory requirements. For granting the variance. Wisconsin Supreme Court has made this clear that the proof of the unnecessary hardship by itself does not entitle an applicant to a variance. All three of the statutory variance elements must be met. They are. Unique physical limitations. An applicant must demonstrate that unique physical limitations, wetlands, steep slopes, streams, rock outcroppings. Or special conditions of the property exist that prevent compliance with ordinance regulations. The physical limitations must be unique to the property in question and are not generally shared by other properties in the area. When determining if uh, compliance is prevented, the whole parcel must be considered. Uh, no harm to public interest. The applicant must demonstrate that the variance will not result in harm or be contrary to public interest. The board must consider the impacts of the proposed project as well as the cumulative impacts of similar projects on the interests of the neighbors, the community, and the general public. These interests are listed in the purpose statement of the ordinance and for shoreline zoning, including protection of public health, safety, welfare, maintenance of clean water, protection of fish and wildlife habitat. Habitat and prevention of natural scenic beauty. Unnecessary hardship, the applicant must demonstrate that if a variance is not granted, an unnecessary hardship exists. The applicant may not claim unnecessary hardship. Because of conditions which are self imposed or created by a prior owner, for example, building a home in compliance and then subsequently constructing a deck without a permit. Courts have determined that economic or financial hardship does not justify a variance. Similarly, the court has determined that a circumstance of the applicant does not justify a variance. When determining whether a necessary hardship exists, the the board must consider the property as a whole rather than a portion of the parcel. It is the responsibility of the board of adjustments to ensure that all three statutory requirements for granting of variance are met. Further, a variance is not to be for the, a variance is to be for the minimum relief necessary. Department understands the purpose of the, a part of the purpose of the variance request is to meet ADA requirements for an outdoor seating area. However, nothing in the application packet describes the or demonstrates why a sixty foot by twenty foot deck is needed for the purpose. I E. To meet ADA requirements. The applicant wanting a larger deck for additional table areas for outdoor seating. The um, the other stated purpose, while understandable, is a circumstance of the applicant, not an issue of the property. The property in has in the past and continues to maintain reasonable legal use without the deck for this purpose, additional table areas for outdoor seating. Uh, further, nothing in the application packet appears to demonstrate why the deck is needed in this location. Finally, from air photos in the application packet and online mapping site, is not clear that the property is unique from other properties in this immediate vicinity. For all those reasons, the department recommends that the request be denied. Thank you for the opportunity to apply or comment on these. Mike Weinholdt, Shoreland Program Coordinator for the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, that is all.
All right, um. There was. Comment in our literature and then also in the DNR statement about um, this one eighth inch gap in between deck boards, is that? The department letter said that that was part of our ordinance, um. Is that standard within the state of Wisconsin or unique to Sawyer County?
It's it's semi unique to Sawyer County in that we would consider that deck boards that have at least one eighth inch gap and allow the water to penetrate back down in the soil. Would be treated as a pervious surface. Where the DNR is starting to talk about that is the compacted area that currently exists. And the decking is put just over that, the one eighth inch gaps to get back to a compacted area is going to be treated basically as an impervious surface. Uh, so if an application or a variance was approved in in this circumstance. We would really need to look at some type of mitigation aspects for that rainwater and in the form of almost back pitching. That. Ground underneath any kind of deck so that we can treat that runoff. Um, because this, again. If if you look at the actual standards for what impervious surface is. It it allows the majority of water to penetrate back to the soil, and right now with that compaction, I wouldn't think you would have majority of that rainwater. You know, going back into the ground, it would run off either side.
Right. Any other questions to Jay before we call on the applicant? All right, is there someone here to speak on behalf of the application? All right, you, whatever you give us, you're not getting back. Thank you. Thank you.
So I am Dan Dahl, and we're located at twelve two oh five County Highway B. In Hayward. And as uh, Jay described um, quite thoroughly, the dock is requesting. The dock restaurant is requesting a various to build an ADA compliant. Twenty by sixty deck. This deck will be connected to three docks and a parking lot. All with ADA compliant ramps and handrails where applicable. A six foot safety fence will be installed between the parking surface and the deck. If you look at the next picture, it's the picture, the aerial view. Of our of our um. Location, you can see the outlined in blue are the uh, are the proposed three docks. The orange is the ADA ramps. The pink is the safety fence. And then the light blue is the dock outline. You can see by this, we would try to make those three docks ADA compliant with handrails. So those individuals that are on the water can get off the water in a safe manner. Um, if you look at the rest of this area, you can see to the right of the parking lot, kind of looks like a brownish area. That is somewhat. Continuous parking right now, people park there. We're trying to go eliminate that, and we're going to plant that back to grass as well. So um, we can come back to this picture as uh, as I go through the rest of this presentation. And the reason for the variance request, we are trying to create an outdoor venue. That is usable for all guests regardless of age or limitations. We do work with fishing has no boundaries. We do their major chili cookoff. We raised over thirteen fourteen thousand dollars for them. Um, Youth Conservation Alliance, this is uh, Kevin Bushnick's, uh, Jay read his letter, I'm endorsing us. You know, if you're lucky enough, um, if you are on Round Lake or Little Round Lake in a boat. And if you need to use the facilities and you are have mobility limit. have mobility limitations, if you're in a walker, in a wheelchair, if you're a child with braces, you need to use a restroom. There are no public restrooms that are handicap accessible on Round or Little Round. This would give those individuals an opportunity to have a place to, uh, to use and yes, that incidence. If you are on Round or Little Round and you suffer an emergency and you need to get off the water quickly and you don't have a house on the wire, this gives you a means to get to a parking lot where we're on the high busiest highway in Sawyer County. So emergency services, a big focus of this. Dining experiences. You know, individuals that have mobility issues are are entitled to eat outside. My father was in a wheelchair. I'm one of ten kids. We never had the opportunity to sit outside. We always sat inside because it wasn't even wasn't even common to have ADA back then. Um, you still see COVID issues. People still come to the restaurant and they said, we're going to take our food to go because we're still concerned about COVID. They're not even allowed to have the opportunity to sit outside where they have more space. Um, if a storm was to come up on Round or Little Round and you need emergency shelter quickly and if you don't have a home on the lake, this gives you an opportunity to get off the lake quickly and into into a facility. And it also provides just a safe walking surface for all, even with you have a mobility issue or you do not. And it provides a cleaner and safer environment. If the variance is granted, you know, where the, where the deck is proposed, we currently have like a two foot, three foot area native grass. Our, our goal here is to let that grass continue to go right to the deck and it could be an increase of anywhere from three to five feet. Um, and then we'll replant the native grasses and the plants, um, where need be. There are some old railroad ties that are still on the property from my understanding is Rudy or, uh, Hornet Stays. Um, and they all have to be removed. Um, there, the area under, under the deck, we can either do it in some type of gravel to absorb, um, to absorb the water or to, uh, eliminate the erosion. Um, and then we will be removing the current, uh, hardscape or five hundred square feet. And they had some pavers outside the back door that led to a parking lot. And then they also had a little small little tiki bar area, um, that was closer to the end of the property and that too will be all removed and replanted to grass. You know, in just this short time of, uh, putting this presentation together, as I was sitting, put it together, these three individuals walked into the bar and you can see them. One is in a walker. He needed two people to walk him across the property because he came by boat. Um, the other individual is a lady in a wheelchair, um, just because it's important that they have the ability to sit outside like everyone else. And same with the other gentleman in his walker. He comes in almost every Wednesday and he just should have the opportunity like we all do to sit there. Um, we've received a lot of very positive responses from the community. I'm just going to highlight a few of these and then I'll let you make your decision. Um, so this is from the Round Lake Landing condo association. This is the property right behind us. We feel a business owner who goes out of his way to help people with disabilities should be able to do so with government support. People who struggle with disabilities deserve a fair chance to enjoy our lake and have access to facilities that the dock provides. This is from the, um, Round Lake Property Owners Association. Um, the pier and deck will provide a unique service by allowing mobility limited individuals to access the property from the water, which is currently not possible at either of the two lakeside restaurants that serve the community. And then I won't read this next one because Jay already read it. This is from Kevin Bushnick. And then the next one is from a, uh, a gentleman that frequents the bar. He is a orthopedic surgeon. He, we support this variance as it will provide many unique chances to enjoy lakeside meal that they would otherwise not have access to. And the last one is just from a lady that you wouldn't even know had a disability and yes, she has MS. Um, in my opinion, this has not received enough attention in the Hayward area. Please take serious consideration in granting approval for the docks, new decks, and the great plans for making it accessible from a boat or by land with ramps and a large enough elevated platform. People with disabilities deserve to enjoy the friendly, um, atmosphere and beautiful outdoor environment that this restaurant provides. So if you go back to that overhead image of the dock and the proposed decks and the ramps, you know, the question is, is why do you need a sixty by twenty deck? Well, there, there, we currently have around nine tables out there ready. And our business is robust. We're, we're fine. I mean, we could probably slow down our business, honestly. Um, but the goal of this is to have a two-way walking traffic. So if you come off the third deck, you can literally walk a wheelchair through it without having to stop and waiting for somebody else passing through. You can do the same thing with walkers. This just gives that walking access both, um, to and fro to get past the other places. This is actually eight tables and we currently have nine. So actually, we actually go down in seating. And it gives us a chance to move the tables and have an outdoor event where people that do have a disability can sit at. Okay, so with that, I would hope that you, uh, see, um, the benefit to this and that you grant their variance. Any questions?
I do, sure. You indicated that the, the tan area that is used very often as overflow parking is going to go back to natural grass.
Yes.
So are those cars also going to line up on the highway? Like happens almost daily, uh, in the weekends? Where the, where those people go if we're going to increase the experience and opportunity here?
I don't know if we're going to increase the, the seating because we currently have that many seats. We actually go backwards in seating. But, you know, and, uh, you know, they park on the road. I mean, we're limited to twelve or fifteen parking spots, whatever we have. And, um, I mean, I'm, I'm not all about seeing how many people we can put into a restaurant. I'm more interested in the experience for those that get in the restaurant. I tell that to people all the time. I'd rather have less people, better service, better food. You know, Dave Anderson, famous Dave came over and he says, Butch, the worst thing about your business is your parking lot. I said, Dave, that's the best thing about the business because you get to control the people that come in. So I, I, I understand that, um, but I'm all about the service to the individuals that want to come that don't have the same benefit that you and I have where we can walk.
That, I respect that. Still have a concern with, with the parking scenario, but that's not what we're here to address today. Have you investigated other options such as ADA approved boardwalks? Perhaps some kind of gravel pad. Uh, I'm not an expert on ADA.
Yeah, no, no.
I will first admit that. But I, it seems to me there are other options without creating such a significant precedent so close to the lake. And this has nothing to do with handicap or ADA. There's a bigger picture here. We have to worry about the lake and the neighborhood. I think you have a great place there. I, I really do. Um, it's got a lot of positive things going, but I'm not sure yet that this is the only option that's logical for this decision, but we have a lot more to talk about.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think we're a hundred percent behind your effort. It's the site that you have to work with that, that is our issue. Th- th- this is a, this tough one. Tough one.
Can I ask you a question at this point?
Yeah, yeah.
For ADA, as far as ramps, walkways, uh, it doesn't have to be a a big wide deck for access approval, does it?
No, um, and the last I kind of explored some ADA considerations. And this was several years ago. I don't know if that's changed at all. Um, it, it did allow for a six foot wide walkway of any substance going down to the water. Now, and I was even thinking during this presentation that i- if this board grants the variance, it should also include for the creation of three separate ramps of ADA compliance for docks because ADA compliance, at least to my working knowledge, without going through additional investigation at this point, would only allow a six foot wide ramp for pedestrian access for wheelchair accessibility. Um, and that would be something where again, through the Sawyer County zoning department, you know, we would allow one walkway off water, off of a boat ramp to basically tie into that side entry door as well as a walkway from the parking lot into that entry door. But the actual additional, whether it's patio, whether it's blacktop, whether it's decking for seating is really what requires the variance. Furthermore, if you're going to have multiple ramps, we'd also want to include that as a motion of, of approval if, if that is the route.
And compacted gravel qualify as not being a structure.
So i- it's a gray area, but ultimately when we start looking at, you know, what is considered a structure, structure has uh, form, shape, utility, and function. What we don't consider a structure would be pea gravel, crushed rock, and sand. However, we do consider them fill materials and you would not be able to fill within thirty-five feet from the ordinary high watermark. So you're kind of pinched on both sides there.
So are even in the hypothetical that this went through and he's going to pull out some of that compacted surface underneath, he's going to put something back in. So aren't we at a crossroad right there?
To an extent, um, yeah. It, right now it's just compacted soil. Or if you're actually bringing in additional fill material, you probably need another variance to allow for fill within the buffer zone, which is within thirty-five feet of the ordinary high watermark.
And unless he skips that, it can't slow to.
Right. I mean, that would be part of the, you know, the variance request or even part of conditions that, you know, that that slope is mitigated as to control runoff backwards. And that would give the approval for the conservation department to kind of work out a plan is how to mitigate some of that. You know, but as far as you, you know, trying to treat some of the impervious surfaces, I would ultimately default to an engineer firm on that one. There, there's a considerable amount of, of impervious surfaces here that I, I don't think our department would be comfortable with designing any type of system here. That would be on the applicant and an engineer firm to uh, provide some type of infiltration base and bioswale catch base. And it's going to be more than the extent of a rain garden on this one.
Is, is there, what's the dock limitations for this frontage and the property rights versus a conventional property?
Ultimately, those fall on the Department of Natural Resources. Uh, from my working knowledge, they are either grandfather to the amount that they existingly have and they changed the rules back in like twenty fifteen and or you're allowed two more in spaces for the first fifty feet and an additional more in space for every full fifty feet of frontage thereafter. I never ran those calculations. I didn't think there was any, going to be any dock um, additions, right? You're staying at the same number of docks that you've currently had. Yeah.
Only thing we may change is the, the width of the docks. If we need to make them larger to, um, handle a wheelchair or a walker of some sort.
Right. And if they are going to be wider than six feet, that again is where you would need the Department of Natural Resources approval because they only would allow for up to a six foot wide dock. Now, again, they may allow additional considerations, uh, you know, for circumstances, but you'd have to get approval for the department.
Are you considering permanent docks?
Oh, no, these will be removable. The goal is to build it so the dock sits in the same seat every time. So it sits right into its groove. And so that when the person who uses it gets out of their boat, or is helped out of their boat, it's, doesn't move back and forth with, with the wire. So we have to secure it as an anchor point. And then we move the anchor every season and fold it out and put it back on the land.
Lot of corkers in this fire. A lot of different moving carts to try and figure out.
Okay, any other questions to the applicant? Alright, thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor of the application? Hearing none. Uh, anyone to speak in opposition to the application? Yes.
I'll take it. I already put it in the other file. Okay.
Um, as the person in our family who has ended up being the caregiver for a number of our elderly family members, I fully appreciate the difficulties and challenges of accessibility and I applaud efforts to do that. But this is a balancing act between, uh, um, making accommodations that allow for accessibility and then in the public interest. I fully agree with the letter from the DNR. Uh, that was almost like a lesson in the criteria for what would be considered for approval or disapproval of this. And what I was trying to, uh, hope that you guys would have gotten to in the, in the first case. The difference between the Edgewater case and this one is that the, due to the close proximity of the water and the impact to the water, the limited parking space, um, if you buy a business, you, you know what you're getting into. Um, other businesses, if, if, if we're going to say accessibility is an issue, well, then everybody might get on board, which may not be a bad thing, but I do, uh, not think that the decking is the way to go. I think there are ways to, um, to handle this. One thing I pointed out to Jay in an email is that the Sawyer County zoning ordinance is inconsistent in its different definition of impervious surfaces. In one area, it includes that decking as impervious and in another section, it does not mention it at all. Um, in addition to having an engineering design for whatever, uh, application might accommodate, um, the ability to provide outside seating, I would encourage, uh, looking at impervious pavers. Those require no built up structure and if, uh, installed properly allows, or if I said impervious, I meant pervious pervious pavers and Jay has a picture of some. Uh, I installed thirty-five feet of them as a handicap accessible or accessibility, uh, ramp at, uh, Doolittle Park in Birchwood. And while our ramp or our our, our walkway is not six feet wide, I have seen people with mobility issues use that and I would encourage you to, um, first of all, I don't think it meets the criteria to provide it for variance, but I definitely don't believe that having three ramps and a twenty by sixty deck is required. Parking lots have one or two parking spots, tables in rest indoors might have a few tables set up special. And so I don't think the full extent of three docks and twenty by sixty is, is also, uh, meets the variance requirements.
Thank you. Any other, anyone else to speak in opposition to the application? Accept the microphone, please.
Hello, my name is Benjamin Kurtzweil, one six zero four zero W West Lane in, in the town of Hayward. Um, again, first of all, I think it is a commendable idea. I don't think anyone argues that, but unfortunately we have the reality of this property. Um, I, I attended the town of Hayward Planning Commission and the town of Hayward Board meeting, uh, on the June twelfth and June thirteenth. And, um, the planning commission end up ending in a tie, which killed the motion. And I believe the town of Hayward um, accepted it kind of looking at it, I think maybe a different set of guidelines. That's my interpretation. Um, there are a couple of things said there, um, that interest me though. Um, you guys talked about sloping the land underneath to the parking lot. According to the owner, all the water in the parking lot runs right into the lake. So all you're going to be doing is just adding more water into the lake. Um, there was talk of an engineered runoff plan. Um, the property owner stated that he had called somebody twice and had not received a return call and didn't seem very hopeful that there would be one. Um, I also believe that, I don't know, I may be mistaken, but it seemed that the EA said this was a larger deck. I, I believe it's a new deck kind of going on there. It's new. And from what I understand, it's also the meeting, there is going to be six to twelve inches of dirt being removed under these decks that's currently there. So that is permeable surface that is being removed. And again, I'm under, from under the impression from what the property owners of uh, presentation of the town of Hayward and the planning commission was that's these are where the holding tanks are for the facility and the deck is going right on top of those. So you guys thought, I mean, again, there, there are, if they're moving twelve inches of soil and you have the holding tanks underneath, again, you gotta think about that as impervious or pervious. Um, I think Jay mentioned correctly about seventy-seven to seventy-eight percent already in purpose. Um, I think it's a no-brainer. I think this is one for the better of everybody, for the lake. It's, it's one to say no to. Um, in closing, there is no hardship here. This is not a main ingress egress. Um, and it also potentially creates a dangerous precedent, which is against the public interest. So I guarantee if you accept this, it will not be the last one that would be looked in front of you. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Dahl, could you step back to the microphone, please? In in the packet that we were provided with, um, there was some. Verbiage about um. This. Proposed new deck going over the top of holding tanks and access doors and things like that. Uh, I don't recall the exact language. Um, could you address that concern?
Oh, certainly. So if you look at the picture. Oh, maybe you can't see him, uh, but there's four holding tanks. There's a grease trap, there's a lift tank, and then there's two holding tanks. And so they get pumped every Friday. And so I've worked with the the septic company and we have designed in our heads anyways. Um, what's the best way to go doing this? So if we're able to to secure this this variance for this platform. Um, the goal is to put hatches on them where we just flip them open. And then there's a metal cap on them and the metal cap slides to left or the right. And then he pumps out and then he secures the the metal cap and then he puts the hatch back down.
Yeah, uh, I I should have more clearly stated my question. Um. How deep are they? You know, so i- if if this is. Going to be an impervious surface if. There's a concrete tank eight inches below grade. It's not impervious.
Yeah, no, the the tanks have collars on them of minimum, they have collars on them of twelve inches.
So there's twelve, it's it's one foot below grade.
Even more so, yeah, even more so, yeah, so, yeah.
That's what I wanted to, that's what I wanted.
Collars are twelve inches, yes. And so Jay and I talked about, you know, this removal of of dirt. The removal of dirt is really just to take the crown off of it to have the water um flow in a different direction. Is that correct, Jay? That, yeah.
Yeah, when I was out on site, there there is a a high point, there's a crowning kind of right in the middle of the deck and, you know, my. I guess concerns with that is if we are gonna put this deck platform over there. You're not gonna have any vegetation that's gonna grow under it that's eventually gonna die. Now you're gonna have loose earth material on top of a crown. You're not gonna be able to slow water down at all for water that specifically goes through the deck. And that's going to wash right down in the lake. So my idea or thought at that point, again, with approval is that, you know, we would. Back pitch that crown in such a way that the water would be diverted back into the parking lot. And then with that, you know, increased amount of water, work on some other type of engineered design system, which again. We haven't fully explored those options of that engineered design system. It it will be a. It'll be a difficult one, um, but I'm not an engineer, so.
And we have reached out to the, I think the general, the gal's name is Heather, if my memory serves me correctly. And I've called her twice and she's just seems to be very busy. Um. But we're open to any and all suggestions. I I just, I find this. You know, very important that this facility has or any facility has access. For these individuals that they can go out and enjoy the outdoors in some capacity.
And I think we all concur. Um, it doesn't sound as though there's a. A game plan. To control. Non ADA. Use of the facility.
I'm not following that.
Well, what if all the tables and chairs and docks are full? When somebody with a wheelchair pulls up?
Oh, we can dedicate them. That's the easy part. Yeah, I'm all for that. Hundred percent.
So, yeah, so one of the docks or all of the docks or all of the tables or two of the tables or.
Like we can put a uh handicap parking spot out front, so nobody uses it without the proper markings. We can do the same thing to a dock. Yeah, that is the easy part.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good answer.
Uh, one, one more question. Looking at the photograph here, right now. The water that's coming off the roof of the restaurant, coming off your entry driveway, your paved parking lot. It appears that that's all heading toward that little grassy lagoon toward the bridge. Is that correct?
Even the roadside. Yeah, even the roadside, yeah. Yeah, I didn't design it. Um, whoever put the parking light in, I don't even know if they got a permit. I don't know what they did. Um, and I agree with you. It is. I mean, that's my frustration. I mean, they're worried about the erosion of a sixty by twenty deck. But they're not worried about a whatever it is, a hundred by three hundred parking lot. Which has oil, gas and all that stuff that goes into it. Yeah, I I couldn't agree more with you. It's very frustrating. You know, I enjoy the water just as much as all of you. The waters would keep their real estate values where they are, right? The the number one resource. But that is done before my time. And uh as much as I wish I could change it, I don't know what I could do to change that. You know?
Did you look into or give consideration to walkways and ramps with one or two tables? Not a full.
Yeah, we can definitely do any and all, but I, you know, when you, when you make the investment in this, this is like a fifty thousand dollar expense expense, right? Put this all in. I mean, the return on investment on fifty thousand dollars on beer is not very strong. It's a long time, right? This is all about the experience for the for the individuals. And so if we have eight tables out there and they have the ability to get off their boat and enjoy it, or if we do an event with fishing has no boundaries. Whoever have more than one person in it with braces, one more with walkers. I mean, it's just having the ability to have a flat surface so they can stand outside without battling the uneven surface, the unsafe surface. It's more than just the eating experience. It's all about just having an event out there. I think they're entitled to be in a beautiful affluent lake and sit outside. I mean, emergency services has to be a big piece of this too. I mean, they have to be able to get off the water quickly if they have issues. And there's nothing there. The bathrooms, I I guess I'm dumbfounded by the bathrooms. And if they are in a wheel, if my father was with us on a pontoon and he needed to use the facilities, we'd have to literally. Trail your boat and go to a gas station, which is wrong. It's wrong. I mean. You know, the amount of damage done by a wake boat versus the erosion done by this sixty by twenty dock, not even comparison. And yet that's a family of six or five or ten, whatever it is. This is, you know, hopefully two, four, five thousand people that benefit from a deck. Versus a family of five or six or eight, whatever, who goes to a wake boat? You're welcome.
Jay, would you? I think Steve's right. All that water runs to that grassy point. And I know this isn't totally your area, but. In your experiences, there's something that they could do there to handle that water runoff? Because right now. That compacted soil are still. It's running into the. It's running into the channel there, right?
Yeah, again. I'm not a an engineer by trade, um. You know, I would think that there would be some, now albeit probably a very expensive type of. You know, infiltration basin that could be designed in there. Um, again, how that that works or as to. You know, what amount of. You know, surface area you're trying to, you know, put into that system. Uh, right now, the majority of the water, and you can see kind of on the photo that I have up, there is this little back, little cut in right along the roadway. Um, and that is where most of that water goes. You know, some of it does spill onto that, you know, brown grass area. Uh, but from where the blacktop is to where actually ordinary high is here is only about ten fifteen feet. Uh, so I mean, in order to mitigate water, you'd have to purposely, you know, pitch blacktop or. Even to the extent of, you know, put a um. Yeah, sewer drain in the parking lot as the low point. And then divert that into some other type of infiltration basin that's out on that actual point, that grassy area. Uh, that would be the only conceivable way I could see something working there.
It's possible, maybe.
Probable. Plausible.
I. I guess I'd like to interject with, I certainly applaud Butch's endeavor to provide ADA compliant access and. He can do that without the large deck. I mean, it can be done. And I I guess what I'm, when I'm listening to all this tonight and maybe I'm, maybe I'm looking at it the wrong way, but. It seems like this board is spending more time trying to make sure. That an applicant can have what they want. Then we are at looking at what the situation actually is. We just, let's look at the amount of time we just spent trying to give him what he wants. And it it, to me, that seems like that's the wrong direction to be taking. Well, the D N R's letter was certainly inclusive of the reasons for denial. Um, Ben brought up some great points. And I I think we have to start looking at some of these things that way and and not just. Just being concerned with giving people what they want. That's my thoughts.
I do think, no, if we're talking about. Unique hardships to a property, certainly that's. That's on the front page of the catalog.
Yes, it is, but he, if the main thrust is to become ADA compliant, that can be done. Without adding on that additional seating for the restaurant. And again, Jim. The restaurant was purchased, he he knew what he had. He formed a plan in his mind of, you know, how he wanted to expand this. And again, commendable and I. I frequent the dock. And I love sitting outside there and I would, I would rather sit on on a deck.
I think, um, I think we'll hold this conversation to our discussion phase after a motion's been um. Been presented.
I gotta say that all again?
Yeah, yeah, I remember what you said. Um.
Those in opposition, so.
All right, is there anyone else to speak in opposition to the the request? Hearing then uh motion by the board, discussion by the board and and motion by the board. Um. Laura, I don't know, I didn't mean to cut you off, but um were you done or did you want to?
You don't need to repeat it. Yeah, you don't need to repeat it, but you know, that is. You know, the the process of the orders, you know, you you take the applicant statements, those in favor of the, you know, application, those in in. Uh, opposition of the application, then you have your discussion about your talking points. I just want to make sure that.
I should have just held on to it for a bit, is what you're telling me. Okay, got it. See you next time.
And and the the first point that you made is that we're looking at this um too. Like we're trying too hard to give applicants their um. What they want and I'm looking at it a bit differently. I I think they all need to be able to have their day. Um, and and state state their reasons for what they want and I I would never want to sit on the committee where. Someone came before us and left thinking that they didn't have an opportunity to uh. To fully state uh what what their intentions were and I don't believe that's where you were going with that.
No, no, certainly not. And I and I think. Butch certainly had the opportunity to present what his intentions were. And and we listened to them. And then the other facts presented by the D N R or points that Ben brought up. Should also be considered into this and it's, again, I feel it's not our job. To offer this solution and that solution. To s- to see that he can get what he wants. It is our, it is our job to make a fair decision based on the facts we have. Not on things to offer him what will help him get what it is that he is proposing that. That that is on him, that is on his initial presentation to present the facts.
Well, Laura, we've come a long ways. I was on this committee and knew you would move bedrooms around inside the building to make it work, you know, so. Uh, we don't do that anymore. We 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 deal with footprints. So, all right, um, any other comments regarding the request?
My biggest, my biggest concern here is the precedent. I I think this. Gets proved the way it's proposed right now. I think it's. The floodgates can open. And it's gonna be a real challenge from here on. I I think that is a serious concern for all our waterways.
I will agree with that.
I commend the ADA and I think it's fantastic um. To provide access to everybody. But not every property can have everything and it and entity wants it to have. And and some limitations. Are tough to get around.
Yeah, I I completely agree, Steve, that that. This certainly isn't the only body of water in in our county that um. That does not have an ADA accessible launch uh or or um. Or or ingress and egress um. Um. We 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 would get over it, although, you know, none of our decisions set precedence. Um, we handled each each one as a unique case, um. If if we don't approve this, um. It it's a noble idea. Um, I I wish we, I wish every lake had, but what this request is asking for. Um, that's not realistic. Um, the the downside of not approving this is. Our committee is gonna be the one with the black eye. You know, but that then maybe that's why we make the the big bucks, um, uh.
I think we can all handle. I I just look at it. The water's running into the lake now. If somebody could engineer something to put it somewhere so it didn't run into the lake. And you balance that. Is is that, is that more of a gain? Than a loss to something of what he's asking for? Runoff's a bad thing.
Yeah.
Especially with cars sitting in there and. Maybe gas and oil leaks and. It's not a good thing. So maybe I'm looking at this wrong, but I look at it, if we can safeguard the runoff, that's. Pretty important.
But then again, it's not been presented that that there is a plan that can prevent that. I mean, there's been a lot of, you could maybe try this and Jay saying, well, I don't know if that that would work, but that certainly is a concern and. So there's just not, there's, there's not answers.
Well, maybe we need to table it till somebody can get some.
Well, I'd be certainly be less opposed to that than Google.
You know, if the engineer comes back and says, there's no way, shape or form we can. Do anything with the runoff, well then, then to me, then that's. That's a pretty easy decision.
I understand where you're coming from. But I think it's two different issues.
Maybe.
Um, the the seventy percent uh impervious surface air uh areas, that's that's a big number. That's a big number.
It is.
It it's a great plan, it's just not on. On the site that that'll accommodate it.
But that's gonna be there tomorrow if we turn it down anyway.
The runoff thing is, yeah?
Yeah.
And this board certainly has, you know, that that power to um, you know, make a motion for tabling. And until an engineer design is presented. You know, but the only, you know, thing you want to be careful with that is that. If the applicant spends the money with the engineer to design that plan and then the decision is still. Denial based upon other factors, be it proximity to the lake or unnecessary hardship or anything like that, then you've, you know, basically. Push the applicant to spend money for a decision that. Right, that could go either way still.
Waste of time. I'm getting the sense that some people. That really wouldn't matter.
I think those are good discussions to have with with the board.
Even if this runoff thing can can be adequately and safely addressed, um, which would. Um, that would not sway me. Um, it would not change my mind over the seventy percent. Coverage area or the, was it nine feet proximity to the lake? Um. So, uh. If we table it, table it till when, um, you know, uh. I believe um i- if after a denial, what is it, a one-year waiting period before a read? Why it can occur?
Yeah, there's a portion of the bylaws, though, that allows for a waiver of that if it's motions with. Or discussed within your motion of that denial and that's basically to have the applicant. Provide additional information. I can look that up though while you guys discuss.
I I guess I would call on the applicant one more time, um. Uh. Obviously, you heard the discussion about possibly. Calling for a design, a runoff design that could, that would come out of. Out of your pocket and may run into some pretty major bugs and still does not, um. Get you any closer to an approval. Um. Is that palatable to you?
Well, you gotta, I gotta find out the information first. So I have to ask the questions, find out exactly what the what the cost would be. And then I'd have to come back and then uh and let you know if it makes sense financially or if it doesn't make sense financially. There's a limit to what you can spend on a property. I already got, I just invested a half million dollars in the property. And uh, there's a limit to what you can get out of it, right?
Yeah, that's a good answer. All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay. Are permits needed for walkways and ramps?
Um. So a a permit is not needed for to construct one walkway or ramp. For safe pedestrian access to the lake. The creation of more than one walkway or the ramp to the lake would require a variance. Uh, that is within the shoreline zoning ordinance. And again, we would allow. The uh allowance of a six-foot wide walkway as opposed to the standard five-foot wide walkway. For ADA compliance in this situation without having to go back for a variance, but if he's wanting multiple walkways. That would trigger a new variance request.
Would one contiguous walkway from the parking lot pass the door and down to ADA compliant? Would one contiguous walkway from the parking lot pass the door and down to an ADA compliant dock ramp? Be considered one?
It, it would. And then at that point, again, looking at the shoreline zoning ordinance, that walkway is to be more or less perpendicular to the shoreline. So I would require that that walkway would go to the first dock segment, that it wouldn't be able to continue all the way out to the point. It, it really should be for safe pedestrian access. And that would again be to that first dock segment.
That first dock, you mean the closest, one closest to the building?
Yes, yeah, closest to the doorway, closest to the building. But yes, you could have one continuous from the blacktop to that door. And then it basically wise off to the first dock.
So then, i- if this walkway goes to the first dock and if it's um, signed that it's for handicap parking. Um, and then once that person is on the property, if there's seating designated for handicap um, seating, um, kind of solves the problem, doesn't it? It, it isn't, it isn't nine tables and chairs that are all, um, that are all, uh, ADA, um, usable, but it, it does open the door.
Yeah, and looking, um, you know, it was tasked to look at the, the bylaws here, um. So the, the one-year refiling rule, no matter which has been acted upon the board concerning the same or part of the same property shall be considered again within one year of the date of the action, except hereby provided to reopen, um, or have a rehearing limited. The board may not reopen any case which has previously heard has been held except to correct a manifest error. Uh, to close a case, a reconsideration of the board motion, a decision of the board may be reconsidered by motion to reconsider made at the same meeting, which is immediately disposed or without further notice. Um, and then really, it's just the rules for opening up that reconsideration. So really, there's no way that they can reapply within one year unless there is a manifest error. I don't see anything else that would just give you the ability to allow him to reapply within a lesser timeframe.
So it would have to be a year.
It would have to be a year.
Can, can a withdrawal be made? Everybody worried about a year? I mean, I would, here is.
Uh, come back to me.
I guess that, that's beyond us. We have to worry about.
Then you might have to get into, does it need to be republished and, and all of that then?
An applicant may withdraw an application at any time prior to the decision, but a pending motion to grant or deny the application shall have precedent over the withdrawal. Withdrawal of the application shall not entitle the applicant to remission of the, remission of a filing fee. So then you'd have to look at, is there a pending motion to grant or deny the application? And it would have to be withdrawal from the applicant. I see where you're going. I see the, kind of the semi loophole. That if the applicant was to withdraw, they could reapply and repay refiling fees, which again would set it out a few more months, new publication fees, um. And it's really at that point, you know, whether or not there's a pending motion. There hasn't been an official motion made.
Well, we need to, uh, we're at an impasse. We need to move, move on. Um. I am going to make a motion to deny the request of the applicant, um, uh, as, as presented.
I will second that.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, um. Discussion on the motion. I think we've pretty well, um, tapped every, every button, um, on this, uh, it, uh, as I stated previously, it's seventy percent impervious surface, um, that is being requested or being asked to expand and, or, or at least maintained, um, and then, um, the nine-foot setback from the, from the shoreline, um.
So just kind of the finds of facts for denial.
I think I just stated them. And, uh, and also, um, referring back to the, the points that were made in the Department of Natural Resources letter regarding this, this request. Any further discussion? Hey, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion that presented by saying aye? Aye. All close, same sign?
Aye.
Motion to deny the request is approved by a vote of four to one. Okay, thank you. Um, the last thing on the agenda is always new business. Um, yeah, I, I have just a, a little, little bit. Uh, how did, uh, this five o'clock start work for everyone? Is that, is that okay? Does it work for the office still? Um, I, a few years ago, I asked about that and, um, um, someone from the office said that when, occasionally when attorneys are present, they come from a distance away. And so five o'clock might not give them enough time to get here, um. Personally, I think that they would just get here early and seem to get home early, um. Right, so, all right, so we're gonna, we'll, we'll stay at five until, um, uh, until there's a reason to change that, um. Jay called me a couple of days ago, or maybe a week ago, and, um, said that, uh, the board, the zoning board was doing reappointments, did they do them?
Yeah, so the county board, um, has reelected you. So you're appointed by the county board supervisors.
By the zoning board?
No, by the county board supervisors. And you were reelected to a term of three years, and so was Jim Tiffin.
Okay.
And that was at last Thursday's county board.
Starting in June or July or?
Well, whatever, whatever last Thursday was would be another three year.
Okay. And then the, the third thing, maybe a little bit more contentious, um. We, we get represented by council and then the council acts on, by an attorney. And then the attorney acts on our behalf. And I don't always know, and maybe none of the other board members know either, when that happens or why it happens or, or at what level is happening, um, and, uh, I, I'm not educated in the internal workings of county boards or, or, or committees, but, um, it just seems like if, if, if we're being represented by an attorney in, in any manner, we should know.
Okay.
Um.
But if that's the case, I mean, a- and I think this would be a conversation that you would have, have with Andy Alvarado, the county administrator, myself, and our current legal representation, which is TJ Duffy.
Okay.
Now, ultimately, if you want, you know, legal representation present for these proceedings, I mean, that's entirely between yous, the chair, and county administrator to see if it can work within the budget to provide that legal representation.
We've already had that discussion and, and decided, um, that, that we didn't feel that was necessary. Uh, and, and on some of the more contentious ones, we, we certainly welcome that. But what I'm talking about, you know, things that are happening outside of the decision this committee is making.
Okay.
Um, and if we're appealing something or contesting something from a legal perspective, um, I'm not hearing about it. And I don't know if any of the rest of you are. And, and maybe I gotta get my head out of my, out of the sand too, uh. Uh, I don't read the county board minutes or, or the committee meeting minutes in the, in the Gazette or the, or the Sawyer County Record. I don't, I don't get any of those publications. So all the information I get comes from what your office um, provides us.
Okay.
And, and I'm not hearing anything, uh, from our legal counsel and happens to be Duffy at this point, but we've been represented by other people over the years still, so it, it may not be just him, but.
Yeah, again, I think that would be a discussion that you would want to have with county administrator at that point, as well as the one that is representing you currently, Duffy. Yeah. Okay, I'll, I'll leave it at that. I, I'd like to have a seat at that table, but ultimately, I don't think those are decisions that I, as the zoning administrator, are comfortable making nor can make.
Okay. All right, um. So, wha- what are you folks, what are your thoughts, uh?
I think that's a very reasonable request, be aware of how we're represented and in what fashion and
Why?
And why?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can't, I honestly can't imagine there would be objections to that. You know, I don't know why, why they would object.
Okay, so, wha- with that said, is there anything pending, anything out there now? What's the status of, uh?
Yeah, so I, I think I know what you're referring to. And ultimately, I mean, this committee, and I'm sorry, this board, uh, you know, made it a decision, you know, this is, wait, I can't even remember the dates, almost a year ago now. That this board made a decision, uh, to uphold an administrative appeal. That administrative appeal was then further appealed to circuit court in which our legal representation at that point uh, did not file briefs in time and was found to be as a default motion. Conversations occurred between you and TJ Duffy and myself as that, well, because you didn't, you know, file your brief in time, we should appeal that decision because it never got heard its day in court. Per se. It was motioned on a default because Duffy didn't prepare information to give circuit court. Um, at that point, it is still in the appeal process, so an appeal of an appeal at circuit court level.
Um, that has heard yet?
No.
Okay.
Um, and at that point, you know, we have that default judgment that is out there and in discussions with additional legal counsel and county administrator. You know, we wanted to, uh, delay enforcement on that default action. So the county had, um, issued a stay motion on that appeal that we would rehear the appeal before enforcement on the overturn of the appeal uh, rendered its, its final decision. It, it's a very sticky back and forth type of process right now. And I'd probably have you default to TJ Duffy to explain the processes because I'm. No, no, it's, it's not on your plate anymore at this point. It is at circuit court. So you guys made a decision. That decision was further appealed to circuit court. Um, that appeal was basically overturned on a default judgment. That was kicked back to Al and me and TJ as to whether or not, well, do we want to actually, you know, hear this out in court because it never was. The, the motions were never filed in time and it was ruled in default. So we then appealed that appeal. And that's where it sits. And in the meantime, there's an individual that wants enforcement enacted on that appeal prior to the final outcome of our appeal on the appeal.
All right, so would it be difficult or unreasonable for our board to get, um, periodic updates on, on things like this that are pending?
Yeah, I, I can certainly do that. Um, that is the update a- at this point. I, I don't even know when it's scheduled for because I don't usually even partake in those. It's through the legal court system matters, but, um, I'll try to.
But our legal counsel could prepare that or should prepare it?
Yeah, that's probably the best solution, um, that he would give a, a presentation as to where it's at because, again, yeah, that's what we pay him to do.
Okay. Then, then one more question that a lot of this seems to be centered around, uh, what's a resort and what isn't a resort and what's a rental and what's not a rental and, um, or compliant or non-compliant, I guess, maybe not using the terminology correct, but, um. Has that been presented to the, I don't even know how many townships there are in our county, um, a dozen or more?
Fourteen that have county zoning.
Oh, and it's, and Spider Lake has their own, um. So have they looked at that and are they?
Yeah, so there was a, yeah, so there was a zoning ordinance amendment, um, that got approval through zoning committee to submit out to the towns. And that was denied at the town level. Um, now there was also, there was multiple elements within that request for basically some definition cleanup of what constitutes a multi-dwelling development, the definition of lots within the current zoning ordinance, the definition of, uh, a resort. And I mean, that's there's a lot of cleanup that's needed within the current zoning code. And I was trying to get it done in kind of one shot. And I think the only way to make these corrections are to piecemeal them out.
Step by step.
Right, um, focusing and probably starting on the definition of a resort first, but ultimately it's still going to need other uh, changes within the zoning code. Now ironically enough, we did just start our first meeting as the tourist rooming house ad hoc committee today, uh, Laura Russ being a representative on that committee. And they are also semi tasked with, you know, coming up with a definition of resort. Because right now within Sawyer County, we have a lot of tourist rooming houses, short-term rentals, Airbnb, the RBO.
And that's not going to go away. And if anything will grow.
Right, uh, but we are seeing instances now where there are either two existing dwelling units on one lot that are both, you know, renting both of those units. Or that you're seeing a larger developer come in and buy lot one, lot two, lot three, lot four, each separate lots. But they're covered under one licensing right now through the health department to rent out each four of those units. Now they're on their own separate lot. Uh, so the state doesn't necessarily define them as a resort. So that's where the TRH committee is going to really look at, you know, those really do have the look and feel and design of a resort. And then it's to fall onto what number is, you know, more than one a resort? Is it more than two is a resort? That's kind of the crux of it. And really, I'm hoping that the TRH committee will give a recommendation to zoning committee who then can proceed to make that ordinance amendment within the zoning code. But again, that zoning code amendment needs town approvals or a majority of town approvals and.
And as, as this, what, what did you call it, tourism?
Tourist rooming house. It's the acronym. Also, it, it was previously called the short-term rental, but now the state classifies it's called tourist rooming house. Uh, but that is your, your, your weekly rentals or less than thirty days rental. Generally, your weekly rent.
And any changes that come down the pike as a result of that will, will be changes to the ordinance and which would then come to us?
Not necessarily. I mean, the ordinance changes won't come through the, the board.
Only somebody.
If you, if you want updates periodically, you know, for that, um, yeah, I think that's good. I mean, we, we talked in depth today about an hour and a half about, you know, the, the issues at front, the pros and cons of tourist rooming house. And we understand, you know, the pros and it brings tourism to the area. And, you know, that's our driving force of Sawyer County. You know, but it comes at, you know, costs and, uh, you know, to the, the environment, to uh, the occupancy within these individuals, to the neighborhoods or the neighbors, you know, next to them, so. Lot to work out on that front.
Yeah, yeah, it sounds like it. All right. Anybody else got any new business to discuss? Okay. Motion to adjourn, anyone?
I'll make a motion.
Pete, what's your name?
Laura.
All those in favor of saying by saying aye, aye, we are adjourned.